I can get that turned on. We'll go ahead and open the January ninth meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Welcome. Our first order of business is review of our meeting minutes from our December 12th meeting. Those were included in our packet. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
Yeah, I got two. So like a package page three, third paragraph down, there's a typo where it says this is a double lost instead of this is a double lot.
Third paragraph?
Mr. Wolf explained that this would be for the enjoyment of his property.
Ah, there it is.
Gotcha, yeah.
Okay.
And then the paragraph after that, I would just slightly amend the wording. So it says, Mr. Schmidt asked if there's ability to reduce the size and still have it use. I would just add reduce the size or relocate and still have the use. Those are the only corrections I had.
Any others?
I just had a question. On packet page six at the bottom of the page, those two statements. Mr. Eber, Mr. Wild. Did that actually happen in that sequence? Or did those comments belong within the context of packet page five? Because John read the variance.
I did ask if there was a concern with the curb cut and there was a twenty-two foot.
Alright.
Was okay or standard? I don't know if it was mentioned right then or.
Alright.
Later I saw that.
Yeah, and I think I did make my comment after we reviewed the findings and I added that regardless, it would require a variant. Any others? All those of approval of the meeting minutes from December 12th, 2044 as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Minutes are approved.
You need a motion?
Oh, did I skip a spot something? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I can motion.
I motioned you second.
Oh, perfect.
There we go.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we have meeting minutes. Alright, our next order of business is a variance request for six oh one Main Street. We'll go ahead and open that public hearing if there's someone here that would like to speak to that. Please.
I am Lori Marsiniak, the executive director of the Curious Kids Museum, and we are hoping to purchase the museum and cultural center and create children's museum there. So we would like to make it more inviting, give more natural light for kids to play in, for people to look at the building and not see a big formal colonial building, but maybe be able to see inside a little bit and better and see some exhibits and we could highlight some things. So what we would like to do is enclose the front porch that is already there with walls or windows. We, it will be set behind, we won't be enclosing the different pillars, it will go in between them, sit behind them. But we will be increasing the actual footprint of the building. We'll be just picking what the, where the porch is and making it last, the very last picture in your packet. There is a rendering of that to show that.
Alright, questions for the applicant from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple. So I read your application and it was your, your responses were a bit brief.
I know, I've never done that.
So since this is a boring a zoning board meeting, I focused on just a couple or a few here. C, if you could add just a little more texture to C, G, and H, so we could start with C on your, on your application. They do not is pretty brief. So, so it's kind of a two-parter, right? As far as what's exceptional or extraordinary, you know, in terms of the circumstances and such circumstances shall create a practical difficulty. So in terms of zoning, we have to prove some kind of or justify the practical difficulty of the variance. And you're seeking the variance in terms of an extension of a non-conformity, which is what the porch actually is on the building. So if you could tell us a little bit about that, what, what the circumstances are and why, why you came to this conclusion for the extension of the, the building itself?
I had the same concerns or comments, the, there's complete lack of detail in the response to these questions. If you look at C, your response there is contrary to us approving this because you're saying there is no exceptional or extraordinary circumstances. For us to prove, approve this, there needs, there needs to be.
Right. We would like the porch to be usable. In the current state, the porch, the entrance to the building would be on the side. And the front is pretty much just shut off now in the current building. There's shutters on the windows and we could remove those, but in order to have it more enjoyable and more useful for children, children do much better in light, natural light and making the building much more inviting for everybody. We felt that if we could put a wall of windows in the front without increasing the footprint, because we know there, it already is out of compliance from what I understand from the lat line, but since we wouldn't be adding any extension, we were hoping to just make the building a lot more useful for our use. The current use is much different than what we would like to.
And then as far as like G, if you go to packet page nineteen, strict compliance with the areas and some of the things like setbacks and frontages and so forth, unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose and render non-conformity or sorry, render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. So you talked a little bit about the light, filtering light, the inviting quality of the museum. I get that, but I guess G and H, if you look at H, the next one, the variance request is a minimum change necessary to mitigate hardship. Those to me in terms of the design, perhaps, did you, did you look at just taking the wall out as you had, as you have for the enclosed porch proposal and putting in a glass wall to make it inviting and so forth?
We have also discussed that.
So to me, that would be like a minimum change that wouldn't require perhaps any variance because you're not modifying the portion of the structure that is non, non-conformant, in non-conformant.
Yes, that would be the minimum thing we would like to do if we cannot while we.
So I guess I had the same ones marked as you did. I had C, D, F, and G, and H, as probably needing more detail for us to be able to answer these questions, or at least myself, yeah.
As a nonprofit organization, we would like to do one time a really incredible job in making this a wonderful space for children, for the museum, for the city of St. Joan. So we looked at what we could do in walling it up, or we could add that little amount of space, but really make an impact for visitors coming into town from either direction, understanding what the building is because it is very formal, very colonial and, and we want to fun it up a little so that people understand. It's a children's museum, it's not a church, it's not a wedding event space. So we feel like this is the best way to do that.
Other questions for the applicant from the board?
Can you speak to, just, and you've mentioned it briefly, so it'll be a little bit of a rehash, but what is the, the loss you would perceive if you were to? So you've mentioned kind of two designs. One, you bring out the glass wall to the pillars, the other one, you bring glass wall to the structure. Can you speak to the benefits that, like, that you would receive from pulling it out further?
Really, our guests would receive, you know, we, we want kids to be curious, we want kids to explore and to be able to get them out a little bit looking up and down the street and exploring their environment. Kids are told no a lot and we like to give them a lot of freedom, freedom to touch things and to look at things and to explore. And so it's just a much better design for kids to get out into that glassed-in space that they can learn and explore the environment.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alright, thank you.
I do have a question. It says the property zone by Form Miami Heritage Society. But the Curious Kids Museum is the applicant and contract purchaser. Are you purchasing the property at this time?
We are purchasing. We need to get through the actual zoning of the building because currently in a commercial office district. You can't have a social institution operating on the first floor of a building. So that was the last week's meeting, planning commission to try to get that waived, so that will change. So yes, we have not completed the purchase, we are waiting to make sure.
And you have a motion before the planning committee for an amendment, is that correct?
Yes.
Which would be completed potentially in February.
Yes, the planning committee voted unanimously to approve our request, so now it needs to go to the city commission for two readings.
So here's a legal question. What happens to any variance granted if the amendment to the planning section does not get made?
We did in the draft motion, I think we love it, the language regarding that the executive agency adopted by the city commission and that the app closed on the property deal as two conditions. So if those didn't get that, then a lot of times you'll see the sequence different than what you would see right now.
Right.
Issues, they're trying to keep people well.
Other questions? Thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to this, please come forward and tell us who you are and what you would like us to consider. Anybody? Alright, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Discussion of the board.
Well, I think personally they're just, they're want to make the building more attractive to the public as it is now. And when you drive down Main Street and you see the building as it is today, you don't really know what it is unless you're local. And then you know that it's what the venue was, okay. I think now what they're attempting to do is by opening up the front with the glass is getting the kids out of the weather and also giving them an opportunity to mingle around. It's going to be a lighted space, it's going to be, going to be nice. And of course, then the two patios they have on the side. I think, I think I like it. I think it's nice. I think it's gonna be, I think very attractive and it is right when you're coming into town. People coming from out of town are going to drive by and see that and say, wow, I wonder what that is. The Curious Kids Museum where it's at now, unless you're really, really local or looked it up, wouldn't necessarily be involved. Now, if you're staying in the hotel by there, you would, or if you had to be going downtown, but this right here, as you drive coming to St. Joe, this is going to be nice. My only question is, it would be the plan for what are you going to, these, these, are these going to be tarps or is it going to be structure on the top of the outside thing this year? Because, you know, we want to make sure that whatever you have there is pretty sustainable. Man, I think, and you're really going to put a diner floor up in that, up in that. I mean, you know.
I didn't, I didn't see that in the variance request.
What are you trying to do? You're trying to beat the hamburger place with the car on the roof or what?
We want everyone to say, I want to go in that though.
Well, I, I think that this is going to be certainly more attractive than what's there now. I, I think it's going to be very nice personally. That's just my opinion.
I think the porch is kind of dead space now, right? So they're, they're increasing the utilization of that space without violating the footprint, right?
Yeah, I, we've had a lot of structures come before us and usually, so we, we are expected to try to find a way that the applicant meets all the criteria, which is why we're kind of hitting some of them that you had said, like, it doesn't really, well, actually, I'll kind of give you a little more credit than you gave yourself. The existing footprint of the structure is one we're typically pretty sympathetic to because, you know, you have the building the way it is. I don't, it's not like you're asking to put a porch there where there isn't one. I don't think it would be any bit reasonable to ask you to tear down the porch. I mean, it's a magnificent building. It would be kind of awful to take that off. So a lot of this to me is asking what incremental detriment is there to enclosing it? And I mean, even the pillars are outside the enclosure. So as much as it feels like it's unnecessary to have the variance because it doesn't dramatically improve the structure's utility, it also doesn't seem like there's any loss to allowing it to be enclosed. So I kind of feel stuck in the middle. I don't see how this is going to make any variance any worse to enclose it when the pillars are significantly more outside that structural wall.
Correct. You know, I look at the variance and the variance request is for eight foot three, which is to the face of the porch.
Yeah, right, right.
Even without a variance, it's still going to be eight foot three.
Alright.
I mean, that's not going to change.
Alright. I don't disagree, but we have to work our way through these questions.
Right.
And the answers to the question do not support what we're talking about here. I appreciate your vision and I am not opposed to it, but we have to get over this procedural issue of does it meet these requirements? And I don't know if we want to say, you know, give us additional detail, come back in a month and we'll look at it, or we're going to talk ourselves into it's already sitting there, enclosing it, doesn't hurt anyone, go ahead and do it. And if you pull up to the building from the side street and you line up with the pillars and you look to the right, you see buildings sitting out further than yours. There's an atrium to the north further out than you are. So there's a precedent here that says this isn't a barrier, but we need to be able to say we address these issues and we're able to answer in the affirmative as we go through it. And as it's written right now, C says we can't approve this, just the response that's put in there. So that's, that's the difficulty I'm seeing.
Yeah, as far as C is concerned, I think there are extraordinary circumstances or conditions that exist.
The response by the applicant is they do not. Those special circumstances do not exist.
I guess I'm okay with us chalking it up to not agreed upon what was expected in these questions. I mean, like you said, it's your first time appealing. I would be comfortable saying that I disagree with the applicant. There is something extraordinary to it. I don't think you'll take offense to that disagreement. I, so C would not be the one I would be particularly concerned about. I think C, there's a good case to say we would say there is. Yeah, I would be more concerned about the minimum change necessary if there was one I was going to get, try to figure out how to word properly.
Yeah, I, I, I share John's concern a bit. All I could envision is Sean asking for me to read the conclusion and I wasn't quite sure how I was going to do that. And I, I would like to think that I'm a philanthropic person, but you know, if you think you can put a philanthropic spin on each item, I'm willing to entertain that.
I can try. Cause I know, I don't know how convincing you'll be, I'll be, but.
Well, I think the issue.
Because, because this is a zoning, I mean, this is dimensional zoning, right?
Is there a procedural concern regarding that approach to resolving these conflicts?
I'm going to, just from a legal standpoint, there are a couple of things that you've talked about. One is the application and frequently people don't do this very often. So it's not uncommon to have somebody not fill out an application clearly or all the way. And that's really part of what the board's responsibilities are, is to try and figure out how their request may or may not meet those standards. So it's perfectly acceptable to expound them. And I think Lori Marsiniak explained some of that in more detail in two of the podium. But you know, as general applicants come in, they don't understand some of those dynamics like the board does. So the board would use your training and your discretion to understand how that fits into this request. So I think it's fine, as Mark suggested, to kind of throw out your spin on it. That's what you do. And sometimes you agree, sometimes you disagree with how things are presented. And that's, that's really the board's responsibilities. You still need to go through the factors and look at it as the request was presented. It needs to meet those standards and how you determine how it meets those, you just need to really clearly lay that out. One thing I would suggest as you're looking at this, a lot of you have looked at the design and the glass was a big part of the request, having kind of that kind of like enter light coming in. And one of the things you can do with the variance is to put conditions on it. And if that's a part of what you're looking at is being more of a minimal request, you know, it's within that existing footprint. It's glass, it's not brick. And so that may be a very big difference in how that would impact those factors. You can use that as one of the standards. You could include that as one of your conditions that it, you know, remain a glass, probably the engine enclosed, fully enclosed with, you know, solid. I'm not saying the right word, but.
Transparent?
Yeah, obviously they could have instead of the glass, decided to carry on with the brick structure and make it look the same and just leave the frontal and closed off the ends. They chose not to do that, which was, I think, very smart because what it does was what it's going to do is open this space up. You know, hey, I'm retired bricklayer, I lay brick anywhere, you know, but at this point, I think this was a great choice. Because it does make it much more appealing. And we're going to have problems with the hardship thing. I mean, where's the hardship? But I have to say that this is an improvement of the structure.
I think, I think the hardship might be that today they're under utilizing their floor space.
Good point.
The other hardship is they cannot modify that side facing of the structure. I mean, the current hardship is they can do nothing with their porch.
Exactly.
I mean, to me, there, there's a hardship there, like regardless what they want to do, the point is their porch is the way it is and they have zero ability to modify it. I would say that's a reasonable hardship. Given the fact that the structure probably predates the zoning ordinance, not certain, but I would have to guess given this artistic style.
Oh, yeah.
That was not the consideration when the porch was put in. So that, to me, would be the hardship. It's just, it's, it's where it is and there's nothing they can do to get that front porch into the or away from the easements.
Well, to me, yeah, to me, that I think the bigger issue, and this, this actually comes down to not just aesthetics, but a rationale, your rationale for seeing three sides open versus with, without the variance, you could still put the glass wall in, right? But you're not going to get that three hundred and sixty, well, not three hundred, one hundred and eighty degree viewing and that attractive quality or curious, attractive, curious quality for children as well as adults.
But, but like this, the footprint's not changing, right? So whether the wall is glass, you replace the brick wall with glass or whether you expand out to the patio, the, the, the non-conforming structure is still going to be there. That's not an issue. All we're saying is, will we allow them to enclose it?
That's correct. Yeah. Because the zoning encourages us to enforce.
Because it's non-conforming today.
That's right.
Right? And we're going to do work, they're going to do work on it.
Extension. Right, and we're not making it any more non-conforming, right?
Exactly. So if, if we built a brick, if they built a brick or they switched the brick wall and put a glass wall in where it is, it's still non-conforming.
Right.
And they would still need our approval for that, right?
I'm not sure.
No, no.
I think it's barely outside of the setback. Yeah, it's fifteen foot.
That's why I was suggesting the glass wall.
No, so the, the wall that they would be putting the glass into is seventeen eight back. So they technically would need setback for putting a glass wall in where the current structural wall is. But the issue is the porch is still there. So it's like, if you don't give the variance, does the, the amount there into the setback doesn't change. It just, instead of there being a glass wall there, there's not, but the pillars are still there. Right. Seems like a good decision. Yeah. And it's actually, I mean, that's a good point to bring up though. I mean, that's kind of the findings we have to find is like, there's a, a benefit to enclosing a porch if you're going to fill it full of children that like to run out erratically. So, and that, that would be something good to add in the findings as well.
Anybody care to take a swing at findings?
I can.
So I think, I think Lori has given us a path here. I think we've walked that path. I, I can find reasonable answers to all of them, but D, if somebody wants to take a swing at what is the substantial property right that's, they're being denied?
Well, I mean, there, if we take Market Street out of the picture, as you brought up, County Bear Law Office sits almost at the sidewalk.
Yep. Well, the atrium porch.
The, well, even the front facade is closer than this.
Yeah, six feet.
The folded roof structure on the corner of Pearl, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is closer than the setback.
The overhang.
So without Market Street being in the middle, they could average the setback.
I agree. It's similar to a property right enjoyed by the neighbors to the north.
There you go.
So.
And also too, with what they're proposing to put this building usage for, enable for them to do that, they have to do this. And if they can't, then I believe, I don't think that the, it will be as attractive and successful as it will be now. So maybe we're, you know, we're saying, oh, no, I mean.
I think Mark's jumping at the bit to read through these.
I know he is. I look at him, he's ready to roll.
Now that Sean gave him the answer for that one, I think he's ready.
He's got a bunch of answers.
I was asking you that being attractive is really not.
I don't know.
No, I know, yeah.
I know, we're not into aesthetics.
I wasn't going to put that in the.
As Sean reminded me last month, we're not designing.
That's right.
Alright, do you want to take a, some of the findings?
Please.
I'd love to. So finding A, the variance would not be detrimental to the adjacent property of the surrounding neighborhood. The variance does not increase the already, I've never figured out the right words when I'm saying it, non-conformity. Doesn't increase the non-conformity, it matches structures nearby. I don't see any reason why it's going to be any, make anything worse that the variance is concerned about. Okay? B, the variance would not impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance. Again, there's pretty good visibility through it, I think. I, I don't personally see the need to put a requirement that is transparent, but I think the pillars kind of still would block visibility, so it's not. still would block visibility, so it's not gonna be any less visible through there. The ordinance is trying to keep viewing distances. There's other things that the ordinance was written for. I don't think this structure, this addition, this variance is gonna change um any of those purposes. C, exceptional extraordinary circumstances. I think it's almost predominantly the fact that the structure is already there, that it was built at a time before the zoning ordinance. Um that the porch is in the position it is, um that's unenclosed already. I I think that's all just the actions of somebody far before the property owner. Um it's not their choice. They just kind of have to make do with it. Variance or criteria D, the variance is necessary for preservation of the uh substantial property right. As we mentioned, um there's other properties that come closer on the same street that they can't enjoy that right just because they have a street past them. Additionally, I think the ability to modify your porch is pretty reasonable of a property right. Um especially given the fact that this porch wasn't built to be nonconforming. It was the nonconforming came afterwards. So I think being able to maintain and modify your structure as you own it is is perfectly reasonable. And then E, the condition or situation is not so general or recurrent. Again, this is really a lot of our criteria comes down to the structure as it is currently. That's not your choice and that's gonna be different for every applicant. I see no reason why this would be recurrent. Criteria F, the condition or situation is not to react as a result of the actions of the property owner. I guess you're responsible for buying it, but that's about it. Um everything else here has been done well before you, so I don't see why that would be untrue. Um criteria G, strict compliance with area setbacks, frontage, whole height, bulk or density requirements would be unreasonably present prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. And would be unnecessarily burdensome. Again, I think you would basically be unable to use your porch or modify it if we enforced this at the full extent. I definitely don't think it's reasonable to expect you to tear down your front porch anytime you wanna modify it. So I I think that would be that would be very burdensome as you're trying to make use of a new structure. Eight, this variance requested is the minimum change necessary to mitigate the hardship. As always, we always appreciate when you're not increasing nonconformity. That's not always the case, so it seems like it's a pretty minimal. Technically, there's ways you could make it less, but there would be no benefit. There's there's no less change you could make that would decrease to nonconformity. That wouldn't be completely unreasonable. And finally, criteria I, the variance would only relate to this property, and I think that's true.
Discussion on the findings. I would add to B. Uh the variance would not impair the intent or purpose of the ordinance. There are ordinance does allow uh averaging in other portions of the ordinance. So I I don't feel that this impairs the intent. Someone like to make a motion based on those findings?
I will move to approve the variance request for the property known as six oh one Main Street from section five point two, table five dash one dash CO dash A, Commercial Office Space District of the zoning ordinance to decrease the front setback from fifteen feet to eight feet, three inches along the West Lot Line, Main Street to allow the existing thirty eight feet by nine feet, five inch covered porch to be enclosed based on the application and site plan prepared by the applicant and included in the January nine twenty twenty five Zoning Board of Appeals Agenda Packet based on the draft findings as the request meets the required standards under section fifteen dot four dot ten of the zoning ordinance with the condition that the pending text amendment to allow medium heavy social institutions on the street level first floor to be adopted by the city commission and the applicant close on the property deal and take ownership of the building and property.
We have a motion. Is there support for the motion?
I support.
Mike? For further discussion on the motion.
We talked a lot about the glass. Do you want that in your motion? Or do you?
I don't see need for it.
It's part of the plan that's submitted and we we mentioned the plan in the packet.
Right.
Yeah, we wouldn't expect it boarded up. I mean, based on, no. Do we need to specify no dinosaurs on the roof?
I want a dinosaur on the roof. I'm looking for that, yeah.
Uh further discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. So?
Yes.
Sir Boomer?
Yes.
Mr. Hailey?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hailey doesn't vote because there's five members on the board and he's an alternate member, but
It still counts.
Conversation, so.
Yes.
Motion is approved by.
And you get A for brief answers on your application. I was waiting for no comments. You should have had him fill out the application.
That would not be allowed.
Uh do we have any old business? Any public comment? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have support?
I support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
It's nice to see a crowd.
That's unusual for us.